All the meeting to order at 5:36. We have all the board members in attendance with the exception of Ms. Harvey, who is absent this evening. Public comments. Pursuant to Board Policy number 2350, public comment may be limited to three minutes per person. All speakers who would like to comment regarding a matter on the meeting agenda must submit a public comment card to the board president or recording secretary prior to the point in the meeting at which the agenda item is called. All speakers who would like to comment regarding a matter not on the meeting agenda must submit a public comment card to the board president or recording secretary prior to the point in the meeting for open forum on non-agenda items. Public comment cards are available at the information table at the rear of the boardroom from the recording secretary or online. Do we have any public comments? No public comment. Okay. We will adjourn to closed session at 5:37.
We will reconvene to public session at 6:40. Okay, roll call. We have everyone here this evening except for Ms. Harvey. She had an accident and we certainly wish her speedy recovery. All right, Mr. Adams, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Today is 9/11 and I'd like to ask everyone to join me in a moment of silence, please, in remembrance of everyone who lost their lives and our veterans who were deployed for many, many years after 9/11. Agenda approval. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? All those in favor? Oppose? Agenda passes. Okay, our first presentation this evening will be accreditation update.
So after we submitted our ICER last December to ACCJC, the peer review team came back with some formative feedback in March. And they asked us for additional information and then they provided us with the core inquiries report, which is available to you at the link on this PowerPoint. And that core, the core inquiries addressed five areas: the bachelor's program, they had some questions about that, and correspondence education, diverse personnel support, long-range capital plans, and evaluation of our personnel. And so then the college provided response to these core inquiries on September 1st of this year. And the president held a town hall regarding accreditation and the risk survey of our students, which we did for the third time. And she did that on September 6th to get the word out about accreditation and how they're coming for a site visit next week on the 18th and 19th. And we'll be responding to those core inquiries some more and any other requests they have for information. After they leave, we will get a report from them in about a month or so. And the first draft will get to check it for any errors. And then they'll send us the final draft. And more importantly, they'll pass that draft on to ACCJC and the commission will make a decision regarding our reaffirmation of accreditation by February 2024. So revealing institutional strengths and challenges survey results. I wanted to share with you the raw data, which is a lot of comments from our students. And so I didn't mean for you to have to go read them all, but just to glance at them. And what Dr. Zellet's been doing since she got here is using these data for taking actions for our students, how we schedule so we can improve scheduling, and our offerings, how many offerings we have because students are always asking for more. More greater flexibility. So we've had a schedule Palooza, some registration events that you might have heard about. So in from 2021 to 2023, our enrollment in the spring when these surveys were administered hovered from about 10,000 to 11,000. And this spring it was 10,489. And our sample for risk varied from about 1,300 to 6,000.
We will reconvene to public session at six forty. Okay, roll call. We have everyone here this evening except for Ms. Harvey. She had an accident and we certainly wish her speedy recovery. All right, Mr. Adams, would you please lead us in the pledge? Thank you, Mr. Adams. All right. Today is nine eleven and I'd like to ask everyone to join me in a moment of silence, please, in membrance of everyone who lost their lives and our veterans who were deployed for many, many years after nine eleven, please. Thank you. Okay, agenda approval. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor? Oppose? Agenda passes. Okay, our first presentation this evening will be an accreditation update.
Good evening. So after we submitted our ICER last December to ACCJC, the peer review team came back with some formative feedback in March and they asked us for additional information and then they provided us with the core inquiries report, which is available to you at the link on this PowerPoint. And that core, the core inquiries addressed five areas. The bachelor's program, they had some questions about that. And correspondence education, diverse personnel support, long-range capital plans, and evaluation of our personnel. And so then the college provided response to these core inquiries on September first of this year. And the president held a town hall regarding accreditation and the risk survey of our students, which we did for the third time. And she did that on September sixth to get the word out about accreditation and how they're coming for a site visit. And next week, on the eighteenth and nineteenth, and we'll be responding to those core inquiries some more and any other requests they have for information. After they leave, we will get a report from them in about a month or so, and the first draft will get to check it for any errors. And then they'll send us the final draft. And more importantly, they'll pass that draft on to ACCJC and the commission will make a decision regarding our reaffirmation of accreditation by February twenty twenty four. So revealing institutional strengths and challenges survey results. I wanted to share with you the raw data, which is a lot of comments from our students. And so I didn't mean for you to have to go read them all, but just to glance at them. And what Dr. Zellet's been doing since she got here is using these data for, for taking actions for our students. How we schedule so we can improve scheduling. And our offerings, how many offerings we have because students are always asking for more, more, greater flexibility. So we've had a schedule Palooza, some registration events that you might have heard about. So in, from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty three, our enrollment in the spring when these surveys were administered hovered from about ten thousand to eleven thousand. And this spring it was ten thousand four hundred and eighty-nine. And our sample for risk varied from about thirteen hundred to sixteen hundred, and it was thirteen ninety this time around. And that's a lot of students telling us what they think they need from us. So, and that's a thirteen to fifteen percent response rate over these three years. So some of the closed-ended questions in twenty twenty three had to do with our institutional learning outcomes. And ninety percent of the ratings for how ABC classes help our students with communication skills, creative and critical thinking, encouraging community consciousness, just things like integrity and respect for diversity and career and specialized knowledge and skills. That's a high rating. The majority feel like we're helping them at least to some degree, if not very much. The second closed-ended question had to do with whether they preferred face-to-face or online learning. And there's, although there's an increasing desire for face-to-face learning again, they really appreciate the online offerings and online options as well. But just in the past year, there's, there's been more interest in face-to-face as well. Then they want these classes Monday to Thursdays primarily, but a little bit on Fridays as well and, and even less on Saturdays. But if we can increase our offerings on, on Fridays and Saturdays, that would be really good. And fifty-one percent are interested in eight-week sessions during fall and spring, which would be something for us to try out to boost enrollment. As far as open-ended questions, so you know, at least a thousand of these students just telling us exactly what they need. One of the questions had to do with, if you're not graduating or transferring, how likely are you to return to campus in fall twenty twenty three? And what might keep you from returning to campus? And so although they express that they wanted to return, their appreciation for ABC, they suggested that satisfaction with ABC's courses, staff and campus and environment was there and that they desired to complete a degree or certificate. That's their, the number one educational goal. The challenges and barriers for them for coming back, keeping them from coming back to school had to do with finances. Even though we provide great financial aid, they still need more support from us. Work, health-related, and course availability, which we hear about repeatedly. So another reason why they keep coming back is the location and the convenience. It's close to their house. It's convenient. Even though they do still want more from us as far as transportation as well. Another open-ended question was, what can ABC do to further improve the student experience? What additional resources can the college provide students? Academic support was often mentioned. Suggestions for more tutoring and learning services. Diversity and inclusivity, support for diversity, the fight against racism. Even though it hasn't been overtly racist atmosphere at ABC, it is sufficient to need addressing. And funding for student needs. The homeless would really like housing options and transportation. Other financial concerns had to do with more financial assistance and financial literacy programs. And students were requesting mental health services, counselors, and support more than we have been providing thus far. And they're asking, they're calling for professors to understand students' mental health and life balance needs. And they also have a desire for more student events, incentives and clubs. I know we have a lot, but they would like even more. And the last thing had to do with what are ABC's greatest strengths? And so academic excellence was mentioned. The quality of professors, academic programs, and the focus on student success. Accessibility and inclusive, inclusivity. Available, availability of online classes. Affordability, making education more accessible. And communication, effective communication, including emails and surveys as ways for students to stay informed and have a voice, a voice in their education. And lastly, opportunities and experiences. Varies majors and extracurricular activities. So even though we're doing a lot, there, we just can't get enough information about what all ABC offers. And just need to keep, keep adding to what we're doing. Are there any questions or comments?
Yeah, one question. Is the board needed to be on campus when we have a site visit by the accreditation?
You're welcome to attend the open forum, right? Or leadership is not supposed to be there, though.
Patty will be sending out an invitation for the exit interview where they basically give us a report out of their two-day visit and, and kind of foreshadow what will be in the result of the report.
Thank you.
I have a question also. I'm not sure if you have the answer to this, but would you give me an idea about how many mental health, whether it's school psychologists, mental health therapists, social emotional learning specialists that we have on campus on a daily basis to meet the needs of our students? And also how many academic counselors?
Last I knew, we had at least twenty-five to thirty academic counselors. We might have more now. And student, student affairs would know over there behind me.
Full-time?
And full-time and part-time, that was the number I recall. And here and in the high schools, about thirty. And as far as a psychologist, I think we're still working on that one.
So we do have mental health counseling appointments for students that on Thursday afternoons, I believe, and they can schedule those appointments in. We're working on getting more robust support in that regard. We do have counselors in our OSD. And, but they, they aren't dealing with mental health, per se. They're, they're working with our OSD students and, and helping them with their concerns. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, presentation of the twenty-three, twenty-four adopted budget, Mr. Barr.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, President Zellet, Student Board Member. Tonight I'm presenting the twenty-three, twenty-four adopted budget report. The topics discussed in this presentation include a budget timeline, Student Center Funding Formula, HERF Funds, Higher Education Emergency Relief Funds, the twenty-two, twenty-three unaudited actuels, the governor's enacted budget, key highlights from that, budget assumptions that went into creating the district's budget, finally, the twenty-three, twenty-four adopted budget, a labor summary, enrollment trend, and a brief update on student housing. For twenty-three, twenty-four, the standard financial reporting deadlines are in effect and the district anticipates it'll be able to meet these requirements for financial reporting, which include completing the adopted budget and making it public by September thirtieth and submitting the twenty-two, twenty-three audit to the chancellor's office by December thirty-first of this year. Shown here is an overview of the Student Centered Funding Formula. This is information that we present and we're going to continue to do so as long as, since this drives the majority of our revenue. The SCIF seventy percent, the split is seventy, twenty, ten, seventy percent is based on FTEs, supplemental allocation is twenty percent based on counts of low-income students and the student success allocation makes up ten percent. It is based on outcomes in multiple categories. The COVID nineteen emergency conditions allowance allowed us to use twenty-eighteen, nineteen FTEs, that sunset in twenty-two, twenty-three. And finally, in twenty-four, twenty-five, we will have a new funding that is established and it takes effect in twenty-five, twenty-six. Shown here are the one-time restricted HERF funds, Higher Education Emergency Relief Funds. They are broken down between institutional aid, minority-serving institutional aid, and student aid. Between HERF one, two, and three, the district received forty-point-four million in institutional aid, three-point-seven million in minority-serving institutions aid, and twenty-nine-point-four million in student funding. The student portion has been fully distributed. The district has applied for a no-cost extension that we estimate to be three-point-four-seven. That'll allow us, this current fiscal year, to spend that three-point-four-seven million on projects that have extended past June thirtieth of twenty-two, twenty. Shown here are the twenty-two, twenty-three unaudited actuels for the unrestricted general fund, starting with a beginning fund balance of forty-three-point-eight million. Revenue is projected to be one hundred, one-hundred-and-eight-point-seven million. Expenditures and other outgo was ninety-nine-point-four million, leaving an ending fund balance of fifty-three-point-one million. Assignments include capital projects, protection, reserve for pension stabilization, IT reserve and others. After assignments, the unassigned ending fund balance is twenty-two-point-four million, equating to a reserve of twenty-five-point-three percent. The twenty-two, twenty-three general fund revenue, which includes both unrestricted and restricted funds, is one-hundred-and-fifty-four-point-two million, of which seventy percent is state revenue, fourteen percent is federal, twelve percent is local revenue. Twenty-two, twenty-three expenditures total one-hundred-and-forty-four-point-three million and the percentage breakdown between the categories is shown on the slide there. For all funds, revenue in twenty-two, twenty-three totaled three-hundred-and-two-point-two million and expenditures, two-hundred-and-forty-seven-point-seven million, resulting in a surplus of fifty-four-point-five million, which is largely due to Fund Forty-One capital outlay and Measure AB funds in Fund Forty-Two. Twenty-three, twenty-four governor's enacted budget includes state expenditures of three-hundred-and-ten billion and a deficit estimated to be thirty-one-point-five million. The multi-year road block, road, multi-year roadmap continues to shape the budget. For California community colleges, this year's budget includes six-hundred-and-seventy-eight million in ongoing funding, one-hundred-and-twelve-point-four million for certain categorical programs that receive an eight-point-two-two percent cost of living adjustment to the Student Centered Funding Form. Shown here are the assumptions that went into creating the twenty-three, twenty-four or building the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Budget reappropriates funds allocated in twenty-two, twenty-three for deferred maintenance by five-hundred million to support the SCIF. And the enacted budget provides flexibility for the use of the remaining programs for deferred maintenance, funding, retention enrollment, COVID-nineteen block grant. The budget includes information from the enacted budget. The district in twenty-three, twenty-four will be in stability, meaning it'll be funded based on prior year total computational revenue with the current year COLA applied. Again, that COLA is eight-point-two-two percent. A deficit factor of two-point-two-nine percent was used to calculate the total, what's called the TCR, the total computational revenue, assuming the state would hold some of that funding. ECA again is not in effect. ECA expired in twenty-two, twenty-three. FTEs are projected to be nine-thousand-and-two for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, based on PT, P-three reporting. That amount is carried over for the future year as an assumption. The budget does include step and column increases and an increase in the employer's contribution for CalPERS. There is no change to workers' comp. And resource allocation funding is included in this budget. Twenty-three, twenty-four adopted budget for unrestricted general fund has a beginning fund balance of fifty-three-point-one million. Revenue is projected to total one-hundred-and-five-point-one million. And expenditures and other outgo are projected to be one-hundred-point-one million, leaving an ending fund balance of fifty-seven-point-one million. Assignments again include capital projects, protection, reserve for pension stabilization, IT reserve and others. Is sign, after assignments, the unassigned ending fund balance is projected to be twenty-six-point-four million, equating to a reserve of twenty-six-point-five percent. In twenty-three, twenty-four, the general fund revenue, which includes both unrestricted and restricted funds, is projected to be one-hundred-and-sixty-four-point-seven million, of which eighty-four percent state revenue, six percent is federal revenue, and ten percent is local revenue. Twenty-three, twenty-four general fund expenditures are projected to total one-hundred-and-sixty-point-seven million and the percentage breakdown between the categories is shown on the slide. In the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, revenues totaled two-hundred-and-twenty-eight-point-two million and expenditures are budgeted to be three-hundred-and-twenty-one-point-one million, resulting in a deficit of ninety-two-point-nine million due to Measure AB funds being budgeted in full. So that's why we have that large deficit, though. We assume that all of those Measure AB funds will be spent in the budget year. Shown here is a breakdown of our labor costs. We compared twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four. In twenty-two, twenty-three, our labor costs, our salaries and benefits totaled seventy-two percent with our collective bargaining agreements being settled and the raises that went into effect. The change there is nine percent. And twenty-three, twenty-four, those labor costs are projected to be eighty-one percent. And that's in line with, with what would be expected. Actual FTEs versus funded FTEs in blue are our actual FTEs. You can see the drop during COVID. And in orange or red up on the screen, red-orange, you can see that our funded FTEs level is much higher than our actual level. So that is, that just illustrates the importance of the focus on enrollment, getting our students back, really. And speaks to what Mita presented here. What can we do to get those students back to make sure that we, we are on par with our funding levels? The red line running across is ten thousand FTEs. That's what designates a, a small institution from a medium institution, which also has funding implications. And then finally, a brief update on student housing. We did submit the student housing grant application for phase three. The state is looking for solutions to provide funding for the third round of those grant applications. As we get more information, we'll pass that on to the board and to the public. Looking forward, we look forward to the twenty-two, twenty-three independent audit report. Again, we look forward to an update on student housing. Continued increases in enrollment. We have seen increases. We'd like that to accelerate further. We're looking forward to a new funding floor in twenty-four, twenty-five. And then we are watching cautiously a potential deficit in the state budget in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty. Any questions?
Ma'am, just a couple of things on my mind at the moment. One is, I noticed that the CalPERS is continually going up and CalSTRS this year maintain. My question is, do, do you predict that in twenty-four, twenty-five, we're going to see an increase in CalSTRS? And what do you think held it this year to where it was last year?
The projections show CalSTRS. The projections show Calsters, the employer contribution, to be flat. I don't, you know, being conservative in our role, we have to be conservative. We don't think that'll hold. We think, we think that the employer contributions will need to increase, and we think once they meet, um, and they, they revise their analysis, we'll probably see, um, that increasing, especially as returns from the market don't meet expectations.
Another thing that, um, I've sort of mentioned and discussed with, um, Zalit recently was, um, as, as you showed in your budget, uh, the, um, the bond funds from two thousand sixteen are, we're almost, um, going to use them up this year predicted, correct? So I'm wondering when, and I think that, uh, thinking back on two thousand sixteen, when the community overwhelmingly supported the bond here. And I think, um, the community college has done a really good job of showing our community that everything that we said we would do, for the most part, we are doing with their, with their tax dollars. Uh, I'm wondering, because as you, as beautiful as all the new buildings are, we still have some dire areas of need. The gym, for one, is, is an area that we really, um, uh, among others, student, student center and other areas. So I'm wondering if you've given any thought, or with Dr. Zalit, of perhaps going out for another bond? So we continue this beautiful work.
We, we've had internal conversations. We know there is need for more funding. And that's a conversation that, uh, Dr. Zalit will, will have with the board.
Uh, I have a few questions, Vice President.
Sure, Mr.
Uh, I think I, uh, notified you in advance uh, about, uh, the interest that we pay on the bonds. Did you get that email? Uh, Madam President, did you notify the Vice President that I would like to discuss that with him?
I believe he, were you on?
Yeah.
He was copied on.
Okay, so, um, Mr. Vice President, if we spend the remaining sixty million dollars of the bond measures to build a commons building, will that result in our property taxes going up?
We have a final issuance that is remaining, right? And the voters authorized up to twenty-five dollars per hundred thousand. And I have that figure here. Right now, we are at around twenty-two point something. So we will still be below the twenty-five dollars per hundred thousand of assessed value
Right.
that the voters approved after we receive the final allocation.
So, by the way, uh, next time anybody prepares a budget presentation, I hope it has numbers on it. So, uh, we can go to certain numbers on the pages. I don't have to go through it and try to find what I'm looking for and to reference you. So next time, let's have the numbers on.
We will include numbers.
Um, but anyway, it says on the twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four adopted budget, um, bond interest, sixteen point six-two-one A N. It talks about the expenditures. So are you telling me that if we spend this sixty million dollars, that we're, we're going to have the same expenditures, uh, for interest on the bonds? Is that what you're telling me? Because we haven't gone over the threshold?
I'm pulling up the, are you looking at the summary that went the slide that has all of?
This is why you need to number the pages.
Yeah.
One, two, three, four, five, fifth page from the bottom.
Okay, bond interest and redemption?
Bond interest and redemption, yeah.
That is not, sir, the, the bond funds that we receive are in Fund Forty-two. And that is this, the bond interest and redemption fund is a separate fund, and that is not for those measure A V funds. And the interest that you're talking about is actually what the taxpayers pay, not.
Right, the taxpayers are the ones that pay for the bond.
Yeah, and so that's not recorded in our financials here.
Yeah, well, okay, so the taxpayers on their property tax bills.
Right.
All I want to know.
Yep. They paid for it.
When we pay our property tax bills, the, and it has A V college on our bill, that money goes in there and that money is used to pay the interest on the bonds.
That's correct.
Okay.
Why on the interest?
Yeah, and so we owe two hundred and fifty million dollars in bonds. How we're ever going to repay those is another matter, but for, for now, we want to spend sixty million dollars on a new building.
Well, we don't.
My property tax is going to go up. That's why I wanted.
Well, let me, let me clarify something. We don't owe two hundred and fifty million. The taxpayers.
Taxpayers owe too, right, for, for the rest of their lives, right?
The taxpayers.
If I could, sir, taxpayers voted on this and they approved it. And so what you're talking about is something that the public generously accepted and gave us permission to do.
Well, uh, I don't, yeah, looking back, I don't think it was correctly. It might have been a nice idea, but it wasn't correctly.
It was approved by the voters, sir.
Well, the voters are, you know, always don't approve the right people or things.
We don't relitigate a vote many years after the fact, sir. So it's a done deal.
The issue now is whether our property taxes, they're going to go up if we put a sixty million dollar building on campus and use the A V funds. That's all I want to know.
They will not go above twenty-five dollars per hundred thousand in assessed value. They will not go above that amount.
Okay, okay, we, so if we spend sixty million dollars, put up the building, is that going to extend the life of the payment for the bonds?
When we issue those bonds, yes, that will, that, that is all factored into what the voters approved. When they approved twenty-five dollars per hundred thousand of assessed value, we will still be within that threshold.
Okay, now, are any of these bonds due within a thirty-year period? Are they due on thirty years? Are thirty-year bonds, twenty-year bonds, or what are?
I believe there are varied lengths when they, when they sell those bonds. Some are longer term and some are shorter term.
Yeah, so if you cannot reimburse the bondholder, then you usually refinance the bonds. That's.
We can refinance them if the interest rates drop.
Yeah, so it goes on and on. Okay, okay, well, enough of that, but, uh, I noticed, um, that we spend eighty-one percent of our budget on labor costs. Is that correct?
That is what we're projecting for the twenty-three, twenty-four year.
Okay, so, and we get twelve million from the federal government, you get eighty-five million from the state, twenty-three from the local taxpayers. That money from the local taxpayers, uh, goes mainly to paying off the interest on the bonds, doesn't it?
No.
It doesn't.
No, what we're talking about here is general fund revenues, and they're not local taxpayer. It might be local revenue. It might, local revenue could mean interest that we're earning in the bank. That makes up a large portion of the local revenue. It might be other general miscellaneous fees and stuff. So anything that is not state and federal funding is generally local revenue. Those are the three buckets. And so, for example, our deposits in the bank, the fifty-seven million we have in the bank, that's generating interest income. And so that income that's generated is local revenue.
Um, just for clarification, isn't there like a county bank where all these public funds are deposited? And you draw out of that county bank? Is that how that works? It's not a private bank.
Yeah, there is. The county treasury.
Yeah, is that, that's where you draw the money out. So, uh, is that insured by the federal government or?
You know, that is, I will find out if it's insured, but I assume it is.
Yeah.
I assume it is.
Okay, well, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, public comment announcement. Pursuant to Board Policy Number twenty-three fifty, public comment may be limited to three minutes per person. All speakers who would like to comment regarding a matter on the meeting agenda must submit a public comment card to the Board President or Recording Secretary prior to the point in the meeting at which the agenda item is called. All speakers who would like to comment regarding a matter not on the public, on the meeting agenda must submit a public comment card to the Board President or Recording Secretary prior to the point in the meeting or open forum on non-agenda items. Public comment cards are available at the information table, at the rear of the boardroom, from the Recording Secretary or online. And we have two speakers. Uh, first, Ms. Cindy Hendricks.
Good evening, Dr. Zalit, members of the board. I'm here tonight, uh, regarding the zero textbook cost initiative, specifically the districts. The fact that the district has not upheld its end of the contract with teachers. Throughout the past academic year, faculty have been encouraged to convert their classes to open-source textbooks or zero uh, cost textbooks in order to better serve our students. As part of this effort, the district said it would provide a stipend to help compensate for the extra work required of faculty to make this change. It also provided workshops and coaches to help with this process. In the math department specifically, we had a faculty member who was a strong proponent of this initiative and spoke at several meetings regarding the benefits to our students. He also served as a coach and conducted workshops to assist other faculty. I was one of many faculty members who decided to take the leap and make this change. It was not a seamless process, and it required a fair amount of extra work to realign my lectures with the new books. Additionally, I've had, I've had to and continue to create supplemental materials to ensure that the C O R for class, my classes are covered. I'm willing to do this because it is a significant benefit to our students. In July, the supplemental form, pay forms were sent out and signed. Uh, I signed mine, and most people that I talked to did immediately. As always, in the past, we would receive our payment at the end of the next PACE, um, schedule, which in that case would have been August. So in August, I was expecting a stipend. That did not happen. I spoke with other faculty members. They reported the same thing. I also contacted my colleague, who was one of the coaches, and he reported that he had not been paid either. Um, we've received no information from the district or H R as to why these payments have been delayed, uh, for this time only. This is completely unacceptable. Many faculty were expecting to use the stipend for back-to-school expenses and have been placed in a bit of a financial bind. It was completely reasonable to expect that we would be paid because every time a, um, supplemental pay stipend has been signed, we get it within the next month. Um, that's always happened in the past. The district keeps saying that it wants to build trust with the faculty. This is not the way to do that. I'm asking the district to uphold their end of the agreement they made with teachers and pay the faculty what they are due. Thank you.
Dr. Jason Bowen.
Good evening, uh, ladies and gentlemen of the board, President Zalit, Ms. Patty McCur, and General Counsel Bridgette Cooks. Good to see everyone. Student trustee. So I'm here speaking because another faculty member was placed on immediate, uh, unpaid, or sorry, paid administrative leave. Um, in, in general, there are two types of pay, of paid administrative leave. There's paid administrative leave according to Ed Code of Section eight, seven, six, two, three, and then there's immediate, uh, paid administrative leave. And the difference between the two lies in, you know, the major difference I see in the Ed Code is, is in the notification of the reasons or the general, uh, allegations, uh, that must be provided when one is placed on paid administrative leave. So when the, in the immediate paid administrative leave, faculty member can simply be placed on leave, and the reason for the leave provided within five business days of that leave. In the, uh, case of, of non-immediate paid administrative leave, uh, faculty must actually be provided with the reason for the leave or the nature of the, uh, allegations two days prior. So that's the major difference. And so it's a broad power that the state grants and that the federal government preserves in Title Nine. Uh, but it's a, it's a broad power that can both be used to protect the college, but it is also a broad power which can result in devastation for the faculty who are, who, who have been placed on leave. And so my belief is that there must be care in exercising it. Now, for the faculty member who was recently placed on leave, it was immediate paid leave. I don't ness, I don't know what the specific reasons are. I have some information where I can speculate, and if my speculations are accurate, then the reasons for them being pa, placed on immediate leave is not sufficient. Uh, University of, of Washington, you know, they state that this type of leave is rarely used. And the reasons are to secure particularly sensitive information, to investigate misconduct, which would place the, the college in jeopardy, or to remove an employee from the workplace who was behaving disruptively. Now, in, in, with regards to sexual harassment, which this is not a sexual harassment case, we have that, you know, uh, Title Nine, Section one oh six four four states that, in, in the case of emergency removal, the college will provide the, you know, the, 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 the college will undertake an individualized safety and risk analysis, determine that there's an immediate threat to the physical health or safety of any student or other individual arising from allegations of sexual harassment. The, uh, and then provide the respondent with notice and an opportunity to challenge the decision immediately following the removal. Now, what's, what's interesting about Title Nine is that it respects, uh, okay, thank you. So what I ask is that we apply, you know, administrative leave carefully, and that we, that there's a, a, a good reason for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bowen. Okay, report out of closed session. I have one report, um, this evening. Um, closed session, item four point three. At the April tenth, twenty-twenty-three meeting of the Board of Trustees, under closed session, item four point three, consideration of public employee discipline dismissal, release of employee action was taken in closed session to deny the appeal of an academic employee letter of reprimand, number twenty-two dash twenty-three slash E dash oh oh five. The action of the board was not reported correctly. The board voted to correct the meeting minutes to accurately reflect the action taken on a motion made by Michael Adams, seconded by Steve Buffalo. The vote this evening was four, um, oh, with one absent. No action was taken regard, taken regarding twenty-three dash twenty-four slash E dash oh oh one and twenty-three dash twenty-four slash E dash oh oh three. Okay, consent, uh, agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sure.
Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda passes. Okay, action items. Fourteen point one, approval of the twenty-three, twenty-four adopted budget. Do I have a motion?
Sure move.
Any discussion?
Uh, yes, Madam President. Uh, Mr. Vice President, I have a few more, couple of questions. I'm sorry. I didn't ask you before. Yeah, please forgive me. This budget is an assumption, right? Is that correct?
It is a.
Not yet in stone.
It is a plan, spending plan, a revenue, uh, recognition plan.
Okay. Based on your experience, you know, you worked in education for a while. What is the deviation from what's due but down? This is going to be for the year and what actually occurs. What is, is it five percent deviation, ten or whatever?
You know, it, it varies, sir. That is something that we always try to tighten. There can always be um, additional funds that come in. So you'll see quarterly budget revisions.
Uh-huh.
Right, those come to board as, as items on the consent agenda. So whenever revenues change or expenditures change.
So whenever revenues change or expenditures change, those new revisions to the budget come to you, the board.
So we have enough reserves that we have that deviation, we could handle whatever comes down.
Yep. We have enough of a fund balance and reserves to handle deviations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Action carries. Fourteen point two, approval to extend Affordable Care Act reporting services with Works Time LLC, a subsidiary of Equifax Workforce Solutions LLC, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, fourteen point three. Approve, approval professional services agreement between Joel Schaper, Doing Business as Joel Schaper and Annap Valley College for consulting services of grievance arbitration and or mediation. We have two speakers on fourteen point three. Dr. Bowen?
I mean, I'm making some assumptions regarding fourteen point three that the consulting services for grievance arbitration and remediation are also for, amongst other things, perhaps also for the faculty union and the classified union. If that's the case, then, you know, the, you know, the union, faculty union was not consulted regarding the use of Joe Schaefer. So what's cited in the documentation provided with that particular agenda item is Ed Code five, three, oh, six, oh, and it states, "The legislative body of any public or municipal corporation or district may contract with and employ any persons for the furnishing of, to the corporation or district's special services and advice in financial, economic, accounting, engineering, legal, or administrative matters, and if such persons are specially trained and experienced and competent to perform the special services required, et cetera." What's interesting about this particular legislation is it states specifically that the district may contract. So there's an option not to contract. And so the district bargained with the union, faculty union, to use the Center for Dispute Resolution in Santa Monica, California. So in, in our contract, Article fourteen, four point five, it states that the district and the federation mutually agree that all disagreements and grievances related to arising under this agreement, which cannot be resolved by direct negotiation at level three, will, on behalf of either or both parties, be submitted to at least one session of confidential mediation before a mutually acceptable mediator appointed by the Center for Dispute Resolution in Santa Monica, California. So if there's any, I mean, I'm assuming that, that this will be affirmed, but if you do select this particular consulting firm to provide these services for negotiations, or sorry, arbitration and mediation with the faculty union, I'll let Ms. Pam Ford speak on behalf of the classified union. Our position is that it must be bargained. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Ms. Pamela Ford.
I'm sorry, before Ms. Ford, are you, Ms. Ford, are you going to speak on the same issue that? Okay, I'll wait until.
I feel like I'm at a disadvantage here because I don't know. I, I read the the action item that's being brought forward to the board, but, and it talked about mediation and arbitration, but I feel like I'm at a disadvantage because I don't know if discussion goes to the board before we come up to speak. So I don't know if I'm being fully heard. But what I will share with you is that, as Jason said, both contracts have mediation as a part of the grievance process. The faculty have to have one session of mediation for classified. It's decided if both sides agree. So we don't always go to mediation. Mediation is negotiated in our contract. So if there's going to be a change, then it would need to come back to the table and not be changed arbitrarily. Something significant about mediation is that both sides pay. In my experience, the few years that I've participated with the union, we don't ever get an ongoing contract with a consultant for mediation. It's on an as needed basis. We never had a written contract with Mr. Cloak's agency with the Center for Dispute Resolution, and we don't always use the same mediator. And both sides look at the list of names and then we decide collectively which mediators we're going to use when we decide to go to mediation. But to spend twenty-four, I think it's thousand, twenty-four hundred a month, three hundred dollars per hour, sixty-five cents per mile, the annual fee of twelve thousand, five hundred dollars, that's not something our union would ever agree to on the side of the classified. So I would ask that if this has to do with any mediation that has to do with personnel actions, that we go back to the table on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Gaines, may I speak on behalf of the district with regard to that item? I, I brought that item forward. And the reason that I brought that item forward and, and I, I really, I thought we, I had a, a relationship with Ms. Ford and with Dr. Bowen such that there were questions or concerns that they would address them with me in advance as opposed to having the disadvantages Ms. Ford described of, of not knowing what's taking place. College has a duty and a responsibility to engage the services of professionals for all types of reasons. And mediators are one of those types of professionals that the board is, may, is entitled to contract with. We can't use an internal mediator because they're not neutral, they're not fair and impartial. Ms., Ms. Ford is a trained mediator. I'm a trained mediator. There are other individuals on our faculty who are trained mediators, but because we are not disinterested, we cannot serve as mediators. So the, the, the college has a responsibility to have those types of individuals available in the event there are disputes that arise such that we don't have a lapse in time in terms of resolving those issues. So rather than waiting until we have a problem to search for and engage the services of a, of a mediator, the district, or I decided on behalf of the district to go ahead and engage the services of a mediator through the Center for Dispute Resolution in Santa Monica. There's no cost to have someone pre-approved in order to be available to discuss any issues that may arise. There is not a pending matter that we intend to use Mr. Schaefer for, but Mr. Schaefer came to us and was recommended to the district by Mr. Ken Cloke, who is the Center for Dispute Resolution. One of the things that's important that the board should be aware of is that the Center for Dispute Resolution is actually defunct. It no longer exists, they no longer have a corporate identity, but Mr. Cloke is still engaged in business. Mr. Cloke has some health issues right now where he's not available, but because both contracts read that, that he is the individual who makes the recommendation, we sought his recommendation. Mr. Schaefer was recommended to us by Mr. Cloke. We did not go out and seek others, even though we had, you know, broached that with the unions to have some others be added to our list of available mediators. And then also because the district has a responsibility and the right to do mediation in other types of matter other than employment-related matters, this mediator would be available to handle those matters as well. No money is being spent at this time. The services are not being engaged for any particular dispute or disagreement, but in the event that we did have one, we have Mr., we will have Mr. Schaefer as well as two other mediators that we already have on agreement. Ms. Ford says that we've never done this before, but we do also have Mr. Paris and Ms. Payne are also individuals who are trained mediators who are available to assist us. In the event we have a dispute and we don't have to wait for the next board meeting, if a dispute arises tomorrow, we don't have to wait a month in order to work on a problem and get it resolved. So there's no expenditure at this particular point in time. Those rates and fees for his services just make the board aware of what it will cost in the event we needed to engage his services in the future. I don't think this, we, we both had the opportunity to speak. I don't think it's appropriate, it would be out of order for Ms. Ford to speak. This is within the.
I, I invite us to take this conversation into our offices. The district, as legal counsel has said, has the obligation to be prepared to do business. Arbitration and mediation occurs in many venues, not just with the bargaining units. Rest assured, the district will abide by the contract. I assured you that in our private conversation over this matter. Okay, board, do I have a motion to approve fourteen point three?
Salute.
Discussion?
Yes, yes, Madam President. When this comes up, this is coming up a couple of times now. I, I agree with Dr. Bowen and Ms. Ford on this. However, we have this set up for mediation, Pamela and Jason.
Point of order, sir. This is the board's meeting. It is not your meeting with members of the audience.
Okay. Well, at any rate, if it, I am going to vote for it because I believe in the end it would benefit the unions to have this set up.
Point of order, sir. This is the board's meeting.
It's inappropriate for you to engage with conversation, dialogue with a member of the public based on their comments or to justify your, your votes, sir.
Okay, well, I'll abstain then.
Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Staying.
Fourteen point three passes. Fourteen point four, approval of amendment number one to the professional services agreement between Walter Johnson and Associates Incorporated and Annap Valley College for Investigation Services through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And Ms. Ford? Do I have a motion on fourteen point four?
Salute.
Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Pose one. Fourteen point five, approval of percepting agreement between Azusa Pacific University School of Nursing and Annap Valley College for student Jerome Bermudez from September eleventh, twenty twenty-three through September eleven, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
Salute.
Second? Anyone?
Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Fourteen point six, approval of performer agreement between Angela Davis, All American Entertainment and Annap Valley College for speaking services. This is a part of the equity program. Have a speaker, Ms. Pamela Ford?
I am very pleased. I think that this is amazing that Angela Davis is coming to our campus if you approve it as a board. The African-American presence on this campus is low at all levels, including with students. And I, I agree with the survey that that needs to improve. This would be an excellent event for everyone who can to attend. And I'm just wondering, is this going to be an event that's going to be limited to the campus constituencies or, and students? Or is it going to be open to the public as a whole? That's, that's.
And the Dean Dwyer can address that last question that you had. Hey, do I have a motion on fourteen point six? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Very quickly, go ahead. Oh, we need you at the mic so that the translators can hear. Thank you.
This is a speaker who's likely to be extremely popular. So what we're trying to do is limit it initially to the closest constituents within the college and then open it up to the public.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion on fourteen point six?
This won't be the first time that Angela Davis has spoke at the college. She spoke in the fall of nineteen seventy. I just thought I'd add that.
Do I have a motion on fourteen point six? Okay. Second, any discussion?
Yes. Well, in the sixties, it was a very turbulent time and I was a student at Los Angeles City College and I was on the city count, Student Council, Los Angeles. And I remember some of the things that went on during that time with some of the activists on the campus. They tried to close down the college and I'm proud to say I was the one that called the police and stopped it. So here we are fifty years later or so and we're going to have someone come to our campus and we're going to pay them fifty thousand dollars to come to our campus and speak for forty five minutes. I'm all for free speech. Angela Davis can come and set up her table and sell her book that she's written and promoting and use the megaphone and talk in the fine arts quad all she wants. And I don't believe that using fifty thousand dollars of taxpayer money is a wise move. I can think of other speakers that I would rather have on this campus and other things that I have, would like to have on this campus. I have begged the administration and certain officials to have a homeless conference and so we could talk about the homeless situation on campus. I can't get that done. I consider that student equity since we appropriated two hundred thousand dollars last meeting for student housing and we want to spend sixty million dollars for student housing. I think that would be appropriate to talk about that with student.
Mr. Reeves, do you have a question?
I mean.
Is there a question, sir?
Well, the question, the statement is, I cannot use fifty thousand dollars taxpayer monies.
Okay, thank you for your statement. Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
Fourteen point six passes. Fourteen point seven, approval of agreement for the Young Entrepreneurs Academy, yay, between the Annap Valley Chambers of Commerce and Annap Valley College. Do I have a motion?
Salute.
Any discussion? Advice? All those in, advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Fourteen point eight, approval of twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four winter and non-traditional men and women's sports schedules. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Fourteen point nine, approval of field contract for services with Field Turf USA Incorporated for the softball infield upgrade with one-time funding funds. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Fourteen point ten, approval of amendment number one to A V O R's medical group contract for student athlete physicals and sideline coverage through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. I attended the Marauder game, yay, Marauders, on Saturday and we, there was certain. And we, there were a certain number of injuries on the field. Was this medical group in attendance at that time? Does anybody know?
This is the, this is our group that attends the football games and the extension of this contract allows them to keep servicing our students. Our trainers are also there, athletic trainers who are in the college employ.
Thank you.
Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Fourteen point ten carries. Fourteen point eleven, approval of memorandum of understanding between Precision Campus and Anlot Valley College for online dashboards and query tools for records. This is a sixty day trial. Do I have a motion? Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Fourteen point twelve, approval to utilize the Foundation for California Community Colleges Agreement with VWR International LLC for the purchase of scientific equipment, supplies, and services. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Fourteen point thirteen, approval to purchase cellular voice and data services through T-Mobile and Verizon for fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four with her funds. Do I have a motion? Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Fourteen point fourteen, approval to purchase Fortnet software support renewal utilizing CMass Agreement three thirteen seventy dash two oh four five P with NE Systems Incorporated, EC America Incorporated. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, yes, Madam President. Can somebody explain to me what this is about?
This is a IT security product, Mr. Reeves. So our IT department uses this to make sure that they are monitoring our systems. If those systems are compromised, they can bring those systems back up.
So what is the estimated cost?
Um, one hundred and one thousand annually.
Okay, thank you very much.
Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Fourteen point fifteen, approval to extend the use of the Snap-on Cooperative Agreement. Okay, dash MA dash eight one eight dash zero four zero for the district's tool and equipment needs through December thirtieth, twenty twenty three. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Fourteen point sixteen, approval to utilize the Sourcewell Piggyback Agreement with Mitel Business Systems Incorporated for the purchase of data communication products and services. Do I have a motion? Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Fourteen point seventeen, approval of proposal with Sierra School Equipment for Administration Building Workstations Removal and Installation with Catastrophic Events Funds. We have one comment, Ms. Pamela Ford?
Well, I didn't know we had catastrophic events funds, and I'm glad we do. And I don't have any concerns about this agenda item, only praise that the board and district acted promptly and expediently in removing adminis- removing staff and administrators from the administration building since it was wreaked with water damage. I see that the hub has been evacuated as well for the same reason. And it's my hope that it will be addressed in the same manner and that the same repairs that are taking place where the administration building will take place for the hub. I'm happy that people don't have to wait the number of years that those of us in student services had to wait to get out of that horrible, sick building. Kindness is to treat everyone with the same care and consideration regardless of employment status. I guess it took heavy rains to get the hub taken care of, and the hub is what serves many of our students. And I am pleased uh, that seriousness is being considered and that they won't have to be exposed uh, to any further issues in that building because before the leak, there were the odors from who knows what. So hopefully all that will be taken care of before people move back in that building. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion on fourteen point seventeen?
So move.
Any discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, Board, if you will notice, fourteen point eighteen through fourteen point twenty two all deal with Measure AV Funds. If you will permit, I'd like to chunk those five actions together. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, yes, one question, Madam President. Uh, we have some kind of contract with TAF Electric Company. It seems like every time we have some kind of construction, it's TAF Electric Company. Anybody, do we take bids for that or what?
We take bids and bids are awarded and all of those come before the board. Before they're awarded, the board sees all of those things and they're pre-approved.
So consistently TAF is the lowest bidder. You pick the lowest bidder or the one that completes the job the best?
We're obligated to choose the lowest bidder.
Okay, thank you.
Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The five action items pass. Hey, informational items, fifteen point one, first reading of board policy and revision of administrative procedure. Fifty one thirty, financial aid. And also fifteen point two, revision of administrative procedures, sixty three oh five. This is a one percent added to our reserves. Board members, if you have a, any questions? Or, um, are, um, Madam President, now would be the time to present those questions because these are likely to come back on the consent agenda eh, at the next meeting. Are there any questions regarding informational items, fifteen point one or fifteen point two? Okay, if none, we will move on to reports. Sixteen point one, Academic Senate, Powell Huntsman.
Good evening, trustees, President Zalit, Ms. Cook, Ms. McClure, and assembled stakeholders. I wanted to let you know about a few issues that the Academic Senate has been working on. Uh, one is that we have passed a resolution in support of the, uh, American institution, institutions requirement. This is an issue that's come before the California State University system. Uh, and they are considering changing the requirements. And we are supporting the, the requirements stay as they are. Uh, this helps both our history and political science departments and really uh, make sure that students are being taught those requirements here in the community college system. We're also working on developing guidelines for students and for faculty with regard to use of AI technology. You are probably aware of things like ChatGPT. Uh, there's ways to use those tools appropriately in our education. Uh, and there are ways to use it inappropriately. And so we are actively working with our Vice President of Academic Affairs. And, uh, we have a work group of faculty uh, drafting guidelines for faculty and student use. Well, we, I hope we'll see more on that soon, but it's a very, uh, sort of emerging and quickly changing issue. And one we're very concerned with. And so I'll hope to report more to you soon. Uh, finally, I wanted to mention that we've also been working on a, a policy, guidelines that are very appropriate for today. Uh, considering, uh, the, um, the importance of nine eleven. Um, this are the student service members, uh, policy that we're developing for, to make sure that student service members are not penalized when they have to miss class uh, due to having to, their, their obligation as service members. So imagine, for example, uh, someone who's serving in the National Guard called to their two-week, uh, training deployment and having to miss class. That could result in, uh, missing more than the normal amount of absences. We're trying to make sure that those students are treated fairly and, and appropriately since they're serving their countries. They're our country. Uh, so again, hopefully you'll see more on that soon. We hope to move that through and create, create a formal college policy. Uh, these are some of the issues that the Academic Senate is working on. And I wanted to let you know that we're trying to be proactive and help our college improve and make it better for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Jason Bowden?
Good evening. Uh, the faculty union. Faculty Union is currently addressing several, uh, what we perceive to be contract violations. And, you know, what, you know, we had, you know, two individuals that I worked with that I enjoyed. Uh, one was a dean last year regarding an issue. And then, uh, the other person is no longer here, but was an interim VP of HR. And, you know, what that interim VP of HR believed in addressing, you know, contract violations or other issues was resolving matters at the lowest possible level. The dean I worked with last year, uh, we had an issue. And we corresponded back and forth and we didn't even invoke the grievance process as outlined in the contract. We simply resolved the matter and it was resolved to the satisfaction of everyone. Uh, I don't see that as, or this environment as being conducive any longer to resolving matters at the lowest possible level. To me, it seems that the college takes issues from zero to ten very quickly. And there's no opportunity even within the process, uh, to resolve matters in a manner in which reason uh, and accountability can apply. You know, our grievance process and then, you know, so this, you know, leads to another issue here. So we, we don't have, we're not, don't have the capacity, it seems, to resolve matters at the lowest level. But the spirit of the grievance process isn't even followed. Where, for example, with regards to grievances in level one, we, thank you, appreciate that. Can I give it a little more time?
Move to give him five more seconds.
Thank you. Level one. You know, so i- i- in the level one formal grievance, it goes to the, uh, dean. It depends on the matter. I mean, it might go straight to a VP, but, you know, if it, if it's an issue that arose at the level of the deans or the divisions, then it goes to the dean and they review the grievance and then approve or disapprove. Uh, now what I know is, is that the decisions are always made at the highest level. So the deans can't even apply, you know, their objective assessment and determine whether to deny or grant the grievance. Level two, it goes to the vice presidents. But even in that case, the decision seems to be made at the highest possible level already. Uh, so their hands are tied and, and they can't apply their objectivity or reason in, in granting or denying the grievance. And then level three, it goes to the president. And I'm not insinuating that, that President Zalit is at the highest level. It's more complicated than that. But so level three, it goes to the president superintendent, and then she decides whether to grant or deny the grievance. And at that level, independent of the next step, the president should be given the opportunity to apply reason, accountability in, in objectivity in granting or denying the grievance. And then if that's, doesn't work, we have mediation, which is non-binding. But what's nice about mediation is that we have another party that's objective. Finally.
Time expired. I did give you an extra seven seconds.
Okay, so I would just like to request that we respect the process and allow all levels to weigh in independently as much as possible as the other levels. Thank you. Thank you for the water.
Thank you, Dr. Bowen. And please accept my apology. I did not introduce you as the Anlot Valley College Federation of Teachers. So, uh, excuse me for that. All right, Anlot Valley College Federation of Classified Employees, Ms. Pamela Ford.
Good evening, once again. Um, first of all, I want to wish Michelle a speedy recovery. I'm sorry to hear about her accident. Also, Doc, Mrs. Gaines, President Gaines, thank you for recognizing and the acknowledgement of nine eleven. I really appreciate our students speaking up on the survey, and I'm happy to see that they are, that they understand the significance of DEIA, diversity, equity, inclusion, and access on our campus. And understand that we need to address racism and be inclusive at all levels. I believe that it's a good use of funds, Mr. Reeves, to have Dr. Davis speak at our campus. This world is changing and we need to keep up with it. I suggest just as the campus is learning and addressing diversity, equity, and inclusion and access, that the board does the same. The chancellor's office endorses diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so do I. And the bottom line is, the people that's going to benefit the most are our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Confidential Management Supervisory Administrator Employees, Ashley Hawkins?
Good evening, members of the board, Madam President, Ms. McClure and Ms. Cook. Um, it is my pleasure to join you guys tonight as the new chair of CMSA. We obviously had an election. I've got some pretty big shoes to fill. Um, I want to announce the results of the election. So our new secretary is Sam Darby. Our treasurer is Ron Bannon-Detty, and our representatives are Sherry Burkholder, representing confidential, Daniel Connor, representing management, Cassandra Trice, representing supervisors, and Greg Borman, representing administrators. We have a meeting scheduled to come up soon to discuss our goals, and we are working towards creating a handbook for the group. Also hoping to partner with the leaders of our other constituency groups to try to, um, promote solutions as much as we can so that we can focus on serving students at all possible avenues. Um, I would also like to thank the members of the board who attended the nine eleven ceremony today, as well as Ms. Gaines mentioning it tonight. Uh, thank you so much for your time and have a great night.
Thank you. Associate, Associated Student Organization, Mr. Steve Benitez.
Uh, good evening, members of the board. Wow, transitions are not very easy. I could say that. I just want to thank you for noticing our, uh, inquiries about the hub. I know it was, uh, a place that, uh, needed, uh, I guess, inspection and, uh, care for after, uh, these few years. So, um, my team and ASO, we've just been reorganizing in T one hundred, working with Dr. Z closely. And I can say Dr. Z has been very helpful with the transition, as well as the staff there in T one hundred. And, uh, the facilities too, and to others that helped us with this transition. And, um, but, um, I like the report. We're going on our first trip. We have our, um, airline picked out and a date of plan to set travel to the California Community College Student Affairs Association. That's going to be Friday, October the twenty seventh to the twenty ninth. And, um, we are currently planning with our ad hoc committees on, uh, homecoming and working closely with athletics. And, um, Ben and I talked over the phone today, and it's something that we're closely colla- uh, closely. And Ben and I talked over the phone today, and it's something that we're closely closely collaborating on the week of October tenth. So I'm very excited for that. And yeah, we've been also planning for following activities. We're looking at the twenty six to do something in the fine arts squad for students that they either trunk or tree or show a movie. But more stuff, the plan is on the way this Friday in our agenda meeting, which I welcome anyone to come in and as the pitch in or give ideas because sharing your ideas, it lead to things. So at the moment, I have nothing else to report besides those things. And yeah.
Thank you. Antelope Valley College Foundation, Miss Diane.
Good evening, board, President. Just a little update on the foundation, I wasn't here last month, so this is our busy time getting started. We're getting ready to do our grant program, which is for faculty kind of one off type of needs. So I hope to get a little PR campaign going on that so that we can give away money, that's what we're here for. Secondly, we're starting our thinking of planning a little expanded giving Tuesday month in November. There's been some ideas floated around about expanding different projects and different thoughts on other areas where we may be able to support. So we'll be getting that through with information's gone out to the deans and others about that particular expansion. Thank you, President, for that idea, great idea, stole it shamelessly from Modesto. So appreciate that. And then, of course, we're starting our scholarship planning and getting ready to start scholarships for the next year. So it's a busy time of year for us, and I am proud to say that the market's back up a little bit, and so we are back over to ten point five million. So yay, keep the market going. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Office of Superintendent President, Doctor.
Good evening, everyone. Before I get into my prepared statements, I just want to say thank you to the entire campus who has moved over and pulled out a chair and scraped off a desk and made room for AVC's mobile strike force workforce here. We've had to move a lot of people around in the last few weeks, and there's been a lot of people working really hard to make that happen. What has proven to me is that we do know how to collaborate. We do know how to work together, and we do know how to make things happen in a hurry when we need to. And we still know how to serve students in the midst of a whole lot of chaos. And so I'm grateful to all of you who have been supportive and handed out donuts and and pats on the back when people were probably tearing their hair out a little bit, so thank you for that. So, good evening, President Gaines, trustees and our student trustee. For those who remember September eleventh, two thousand and one, it's our generation's day of infamy. Many of us remember where we were when we first heard that a plane crashed into one of the towers. The bewilderment that we felt, how does this happen? The fear we felt when we realized that it was intentional. And the national unity that coalesced in the aftermath. The day before, on September tenth, two thousand and one, the divisions in our nation were prevalent. They were profound and they were persistent. Headlines in national newspapers on the tenth bemoaned a struggling economy and the competition for education funding. Does that sound familiar? Something's never changed, right? One headline debated dress codes in schools and the scandal of a bare midriff. But mere hours later, these issues were put aside and tears of grief from this major tragedy cleansed our vision. As a people, we chose to let small things be small things. We chose to let bigger things be small things, and we chose to put our individual interests aside for the collective good. The relatively short lived unity in the aftermath of nine eleven wasn't natural. It wasn't a given, it didn't have to happen, it only happened because we willed it to be. I'm not merely musing about a past tragedy, I'm hoping that the highly intelligent people whom I'm privileged to serve will realize that on September eleventh, twenty twenty three, we are faced with the same choice that we had twenty two years ago. We can be divided or we can move forward in unity. Division is easy, it's the lazy person's approach to getting things done. Unity, on the other hand, is hard. We choose discussion over accusation, we choose relationships over partisanship. We choose the collective good over radical individualism. That's hard. But like most hard things, it's the most rewarding. Webster or Siri these days would tell you that unity is a noun, a state of being. But I propose that unity at Antelope Valley College is a verb. It is every action we take to attain and preserve a united collective. It's every active decision we make to solve a problem instead of promote one or stir one up. It's every active interaction that we have with another human to uplift their spirit rather than deflate them. It's the active decision we make every morning where when we are blessed to wake up that drives our choices throughout the day. This morning at the nine eleven Patriot Day Ceremony, I invited those in attendance to think about our pledge of allegiance and the pivotal word indivisible. Of all of the words in that promise that we make every time we put our hand over our hearts or salute the flag, that word is arguably the most pivotal to preserving what is essential to the success of this experiment we call democracy. Indivisible. Life is not a dress rehearsal. Unity is a verb. If we wish to honor those who didn't get to go home the night of September eleventh, two thousand and one, if we wish to honor the first responders who ran into danger instead of away from it, then let's make the difficult and courageous choices required every single day to choose unity. Our students, our community and our colleges deserves nothing less. Thank you for joining me.
Thank you, Dr. Zalit. Okay, board members, Mr. Rivera.
First, I would just like to extend my condolences for all those who were affected twenty two years ago today. It was a tough event, as the president said, but it made us better as a nation. I'd like to move on to the college topic. And when I was first elected to this position, my main goals were to unify the college, as in the students and the separate divisions of students. Because as I saw it, there was sort of a divide between the AVC students who came here after high school and then the other categories of students, like the older the older students, the young dual enrolled high school students. And I really wanted to see there be a combined culture. And I am happy to say that this upcoming Wednesday, we will be having our first combined dual enrolled and AVC student meeting with the pre law club. And we hope for this combination to continue with our sister campus SOAR participating in AVC clubs and hopefully fostering a sense of unity and community within the AVC students where these dual enrolled students and these AVC students feel safe collaborating with each other. And I hope to update you guys more in the future about this project, and I hope that is successful.
Our football team came back from behind and won the game on Saturday night. That was a good home start for them. I wanted to mention, I I know Mr. Reeves has talked about the fifty thousand for Angela Davis, and I know that seems extreme to some people. But going back in the day, I was on the speakers bureau at the college, which we brought in speakers and people like Jane Goodall, Dr. Leaky, Ansel Adams, Gene Roddenberry, and they'd cost two, three thousand bucks. But we also brought in people like Tina Turner, which costs twenty two hundred bucks, or Steve Martin, which costs five hundred bucks. So things have changed, the speakers get a lot more. I love having speakers on campus. I'd like to see us do it a lot more. And if there was grant money to do that, I'd like to see us bring all kinds of speakers out here and use this theater. It is a great thing, and when you see it back in the day and how the community reacted and the students reacted, you understand the importance of engaging in those kinds of things. Thank you.
Many years ago, I was a rugby player and I played in international rugby tournaments. And one of the tournaments that I played with in New York City and London, England, was named after Mark Bingham. And Mark was on one of the toughest rugby teams, the San Francisco Fog. And Mark unfortunately was headed back to San Francisco on nine eleven. And he was on flight ninety three over Pennsylvania when the people picked up their cell phones and found out America was on attack. And then the change, the plane changed course and was headed back east to hit either the White House or the Capitol. And Mark called his mom on the cellphone. And he said, you know, this is Mark Bingham, and his mom thought, well, he never says his full name when he calls me. And Mark explained to his mom in two conversations that the people on the plane were going to take over the plane, prevent it from going back east and doing any damage. I had the pleasure on the two tournaments that I attended and participated in to meet Mark's mom. And of course, I hugged her to death. Congratulations, Mark, we love you wherever you are, and we love your mom, and God bless America.
Michael.
As a student in the early seventies at UCLA, I got to listen to Angela Davis pretty much every day of the week, and it was free. So this, so it'll be interesting to see if she has changed any of her opinions since the early seventies. I want to thank the academic senate for showing support to our our service members. Anything that we can do to help them out in their educational goals is is the least we can do for the service they've given to their country. And I also want to thank the Veterans Resource Center for putting on the nine eleven memorial this morning. I'm always very impressed by the fact there's almost three thousand flags planted in the grounds around the admin building and by the veteran speakers who'd get up and talk a little bit about their service afternoon. And that's all.
Okay, first of all, I want to say, Dr. Zalit, that's a very, that was a very profound message, really. You hit it right there, everything you said. I, my last year of teaching, I was a seventh grade teacher during nine eleven. And I arrived at work before I even knew what had happened that morning. And in walk thirty, some seventh grade boys and girls who who had all seen part of the morning's activities, and they were just literally foaming at the mouth with questions. And I picked up the phone and called my husband, who was still at home, and I said, I don't know what happened, but something really, really big has happened because the kids won't stop talking about it. And my husband said, yeah, you don't want to know what's happened. And so before long, we were given a given a notice from our principal not to talk about it and to try to deter other kids from asking questions about it. But it was really probably one of the most difficult days I ever had in with those little charming seventh graders who I loved from day one. But yeah, I think about it every so often, and this next couple of weeks from now, I'll be going to New York, and I, one of the things I hope to do, I'm going for a conference, is to be able to visit that site and just just try to reminisce a little bit about what those those days after were like for all Americans. And how I think if anything, the beauty was that we sort of came together as a nation shortly after that and and sort of forgot individuality, but yet saw each other as as part of the American thread, and I thought that was beautiful. I also want to just share with everybody that on November seventh through the twelfth, Southern Kern Unified School District in collaboration with the Chamber of Commerce and Roseman and the Roseman Municipal Advisory Council will be hosting the AV wall, the Vietnam Memorial Wall will be on one of my elementary adjacent to one of my elementary campuses for those days, and we will have a candlelit ceremony on November tenth and a veterans ceremony on November eleven at eleven, and we're inviting in everyone to, it'll be open twenty four hours a day. If you haven't seen that that replica of the Vietnam wall, I highly encourage you to come out, it is a beautiful replica. And it will be the the location memorial will be open twenty four hours a day. So, okay, also, I want to share with everybody that our next board meeting will be on Friday, October sixth at eight AM, will be closed session, and our regular board meeting will start at nine. That's Friday, October sixth at nine o'clock for open session. Okay, nothing else, we will adjourn the meeting at eight twenty two.